Welcome. Before we begin this virtual event, we want to take a moment to acknowledge that Southern Connecticut State University in New Haven sits on the traditional ancestral and unceded land of the Pawgusit people. Please join us in recognizing the Pawgusit community where we are and the indigenous communities where you are, their elders, both past and present, as well as their future generations. A land acknowledgement is also a critical step toward working with native communities to secure meaningful partnerships and inclusion in the stewardship and protection of their cultural resources and homelands. Speaking from what is now the state of Connecticut and the city of New Haven, we continue to learn from the many indigenous peoples and nations who have stewarded these lands and waterways for generations: Golden Hill Pawgusit, Turkey Hill Pawgusit, the Quinnipiac Mohegan, Machantiquet Pequot, Eastern Pequot, Shatticoke, Niantic, and other Algonquin-speaking peoples. We honor these ancestral grounds upon which we reside and learn while standing in solidarity with all indigenous peoples worldwide in their continuous resistance, resilience, and strength. My name is Sariana Sabares, and I'm a graduate student at Southern Connecticut State University in the Social Work and Women's and Gender Studies departments, as well as a member of the National Jobs for All Network dedicated to establishing a New Deal-style federal job guarantee in the United States. I'm also the co-organizer of this town hall. Welcome. In just a few minutes, Dr. Stephen Monroe-Tom Zach, the event's other co-organizer, will begin as our emcee to make speaker introductions. Before he does that, however, I want to introduce our musical performer, Frank Panzarella. Frank is a lifelong activist whose work spans movements. He has been a labor organizer and leader with Greater New Haven Labor History Association, sorry, and with several different machinist unions, an anti-war activist, and a labor movement troubadour. We hope you'll enjoy the historical activist songs Frank has chosen to share with us tonight.
All right, I'll start then.
Yeah.
I'm glad you gave that nice introduction because even in the labor movement, Native American people, of course, and blacks and other minorities and women were excluded, but the labor movement still had a great importance in pushing for changes and pushing for improvements in life. So I thought I'd start with a historical song about the struggle for the eight-hour day, which was one of the first great struggles of labor to change living conditions, to improve their lives. And even though today we are fighting for full employment, in many ways, the eight-hour struggle was a very important step in galvanizing workers. And in 1866, the International Working Men's Association in Europe and also around the world, and as well as the National Labor Union within the United States, a precursor to the AFL, called for the creation of the eight-hour day. So here's a couple of verses of the eight-hour day. It's actually several verses, but I'm only going to sing a couple just for the brevity. "We mean to make things over. We are tired of toil for naught. With fair enough to live upon, and near an hour forethought. We want to feel the sunshine. We want to smell the flowers. We are sure that God has willed it. And we mean to have eight hours. We're summoning our forces from the shipyard shop and mill. Eight hours for work, eight hours for rest, eight hours for what we will. From factories and workshops in long and weary lines, from all the sweltering forges, and from out the sunless mines. Wherever toil is wasting the force of life to live, there the bent and battered armies come to claim what da-gah-dove-give. And the blazing on the banner doth with hope the nation fill. Eight hours for work, eight hours for rest, eight hours for what we will. Hurrah, hurrah for labor, for it shall arise in might. It has filled the world with plenty. It shall fill the world with light. Hurrah, hurrah for labor. It's mustering all of its powers, and shall march along to victory with a banner of eight hours. Shout, shout the echoing rally till all the welcome thrill. Eight hours for work, eight hours for rest, eight hours for what we will." There you go.
Thank you. Yeah. Now, here's our emcee, Stephen Monroe-Tom Zach.
Good evening, everyone. On behalf of Southern Connecticut State University Department of Social Work, I want to welcome you to our Good Jobs for All Town Hall. We have a wonderful program of engaging speakers tonight who will inform us on a range of intersectional work for social and economic justice that is related to the fight for a basic human right to employment. Out of this, we hope to build a Connecticut-based movement to guarantee good jobs at good wages. To do this, we have a follow-up meeting planned for October 18th at 7:00 PM, which you will hear more about later in our program this evening. The program for tonight's event is linked in the Zoom chat and provides further detail on the background of the various speakers which I will be introducing this evening. Finally, let me thank all of you for attending. As indicated, I truly hope out of this, we can begin working together in Connecticut to advance the fight for a federal job guarantee. So now, it is my great pleasure to introduce our first speaker of the evening, who will offer opening remarks on behalf of the National Jobs for All Network, the chief sponsor of tonight's event. Gertrude Schaffner Goldberg is Professor Emerita of Social Work and Social Policy at the Adelphi University School of Social Work. As co-chair of the Columbia University Seminar on Full Employment, Social Welfare, and Equity, Dr. Goldberg co-led a national conference at Columbia University, an Economic Bill of Rights for the 21st Century, and a public meeting at the New School, a New Deal for New York City and the United States. Dr. Goldberg is co-founder and chair of the National Jobs for All Network and has been a leader and inspiration to many of us who believe in the basic human right to a job. Please join me in welcoming Dr. Trudy Goldberg.
Thank you very much, Zach. It is my pleasure to welcome you to the fourth town meeting of the National Jobs for All Network, ones in Dayton, Ohio, Columbus, Ohio, Memphis, Tennessee, and now New Haven, quite close to my home, I might add. All of these events have been initiated and planned by our outreach coordinator, Logan Martinez, and by local leaders like Zach and Sariana. We have also had major events in New York City, one mentioned by Zach, a series of events to promote a New Deal for New York City and the USA, including the promotion of a New York City Jobs for All bill, then supported by the public advocate Trish James. For nearly 30 years, we at NJFAN have advocated living wages, living wage jobs for all, the first of FDR's economic rights, and the one he considered fundamental in that its achievement would make it easier to achieve other important economic rights like housing, old age security, quality education, and their achievement in turn would contribute to the achievement of the right to employment. In calling for jobs for all and an end to the evils of unemployment, we don't mean the types of lean and mean jobs that have proliferated ever since the early '70s, when we made that U-turn away from progress toward inclusion, equity, and social welfare. We don't mean some arbitrary rate of unemployment that would still leave millions jobless. Speaking of that, NJFAN challenges the official unemployment rate, which leaves out more than it includes. The latest unemployment report from the Bureau of Labor Statistics said there were 8.4 million unemployed, a rate of 5.2%, but that omits millions more: the involuntary part-time workers and those who want jobs but are not actively looking, perhaps because of lack of transportation, childcare, fear of COVID, or discouragement. The total is not 8.4 million or 5.2%, a sizable number in itself, but 18.6 million or 11.1%. And there are another 16.7 million working poor, earning less than the four-person paltry poverty level for a family of four for year-round full-time work. The total is thus 35.3 million unemployed, underemployed, or working poor, an estimated 10 million of the unemployed have lost unemployment benefits as of their Labor Day present from Washington. We think that this undercount, by the way, has enormous political ramifications because it underestimates the size of the problem, which is always important when you're trying to promote a social, addressing a social problem. A job guarantee, we contend, would aid an all-out attack on climate change by reducing a major barrier, the fear of job loss. The job guarantee legislation that we proposed creates many green jobs that would contribute to sustainability, as well as those like child and elder care that use few fossil fuels. A job guarantee would mean more workers but not longer work hours. Why not reduce the hours of work, spread the work, and provide more time for family and leisure? And what about paid vacations and sick leave? Our version of a JG, a job guarantee, means living wages. We would fight for more than 15. A JG, though an important centerpiece of economic and social justice, does not stand alone, nor should its advocates struggle alone. We must work together. These town meetings with their diverse participants demonstrate the need for unity among the various components of equity and justice. This is why our newsletter invites and encourages you to report what you're doing to further our shared goals.
Trudy, 30 seconds, sorry.
Okay, I'm almost through.
Okay, sorry.
Very with democracy itself threatened, the preservation of democratic rights has to be high on the agenda of all who fight for economic and social justice. Achievement of our goals depend on big voter turnouts among those who stand to benefit from a JG and related social, economic, and environmental progress, the very people whose right to vote is threatened. United we must stand. Join us. Continue to work with the planners of this meeting. If you're from out of this area, help us to mount a town meeting in your city or town, and subscribe to our Jobs for All newsletter. Visit our website. Join NJFAN.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Goldberg. So our next speaker is Dr. Philip Harvey. Philip Harvey is a professor of law and economics at Rutgers University Law School. He received his BA degree in history from Yale University, a PhD in economics from the Graduate Faculty of the New School for Social Research, and a law degree from Yale Law School. Professor Harvey is an internationally recognized expert on the right to work, recognized in international human rights law. He has published two books and dozens of scholarly articles on the subject, and in recent years has advised Representative John Conyers and other legislators on the design and drafting of HR 1000, the Humphrey Harkins 21st Century Full Employment and Training Act. He was a founding member of the National Jobs for All Network and serves as the organization's council. Please join me in welcoming our keynote speaker, Dr. Philip Harvey.
Thank you, Zach, and I apologize for failing to unmute. I'm going to try and address three questions. The first is, why bother? What is it about unemployment that commands the attention of progressive reform advocates, no matter what their principal interest is, and no matter what the principal reform is that they're interested in? Not as a replacement for what they want to do, but as a necessary and helpful foundation to achieve what they want. Second is the heart of the presentation I'd like to make, and that is to explain why it has been so hard to eradicate unemployment. It's been around as a recognized social problem for close to 700 years. It's been the focus of policy attention for that entire period, and yet we have made next to no progress in eradicating it. And then the third part of my presentation will be to say something about the elements of a successful strategy for finally getting rid of unemployment, securing everyone's right to a decent job, and moving the rest of the progressive reform agenda. So let me begin with why bother? Unemployment causes a long list of personal problems, and I'd love to have the time to detail them all. The research literature is rich. It also produces very extensive social problems that are costly. In fact, my own research suggests that the cost of unemployment exceed the cost of providing jobs for everyone who is unemployed. But I don't think it's either of these characteristics of unemployment that give it the priority that it deserves, because the same is true of, you know, some other rights, such as the right to food, the right to water, the right to housing. All of these have similar personal and social consequences. What distinguishes the problem of unemployment is its instrumental effect on efforts to achieve other rights. And I think it's the instrumental benefit of eradicating the problem that is the source of its particular importance within the progressive reform agenda. Trudy alluded to this in referring to FDR's comment about the foundational role of securing the right to a useful and remunerative job. I'd just like to provide a touch more background on that comment. It was a comment that comprised the peroration of his last State of the Union message in 1945, and it referred to, he said, "In the State of the Union message last year, 1944, I set forth what I considered to be an American Economic Bill of Rights." For those of you who may not be aware of it, that Economic Bill of Rights was a proposal FDR made because in that 1944 State of the Union message, he criticized the Bill of Rights in the U.S. Constitution as no longer adequate to secure all of the human rights proclaimed in the Declaration of Independence. He thought that it did a reasonably adequate job to secure the right to life and liberty, but not to ensure everyone's right to equal pursuit of happiness. And so he thought the economic and social rights listed in his Economic Bill of Rights were necessary to fulfill the promise of the Declaration of Independence. Going on in his 1945 speech, I said then and I say now that these economic truths represent a second Bill of Rights under which a new basis of security and prosperity can be established for all regardless of station, race, or creed. Of these rights, the most fundamental and one on which the fulfillment of others in large degree depends, is the right to a useful and remunerative job. And it's that last point that I think we should focus on. What is it about securing the right to employment at decent wages and with decent working conditions that makes it possible to secure economic and social rights in other areas? Part of it has to do with resources. The lower the unemployment rate, the fewer the number of people, and the less severe the problems of the people who need government assistance. At the same time, the resources available to government are increased, and so you have fewer problems to address with greater resources. It's simple arithmetic. So one reason securing the right to employment is important because it overcomes some of the resource problems that inhibit and have inhibited progressive reforms in the past. The second way in which it contributes to those other efforts is the assistance it provides to specific progressive proposals. Trudy mentioned that it provides a means of compensating people who are hurt by progressive change, and there are people who would be hurt by progressive change. Coal miners will lose jobs, and a job guarantee at wages comparable to those that are lost can reduce the fear and consequent resistance of people who stand to lose jobs associated with whatever progressive reform you may be talking about. Secondly, the provision of a job guarantee provides government with access to a large set of resources, the underutilized labor supply of the nation, to address a whole range of problems. And the government could use that labor resource to address whatever problems people thought were the most important to be addressed. So it's not a policy that has a limited payoff in terms of its contribution to other agenda items, but would provide resources potentially for any and all of them. And finally, it would reduce the opportunity that politicians and interest groups presently have of promoting public policies that would otherwise not look too attractive on the basis of the jobs that they would create or save. Think about the Keystone XL pipeline. The supporters of that pipeline essentially had no other argument in favor of it other than the jobs that they claimed it would create or save. If full employment is the normal state of the economy, because the government is constantly prepared to ensure that jobs are available for everyone who wants to work, the teeth would be taken out of that kind of argument. And the promoters of unattractive public policies would have to defend them on their merits, rather than on the basis of what they would supposedly contribute to addressing the problem of unemployment. So there are some more things I could say here, but I think it's more important that I go on to the second question. I think that fighting unemployment, securing the right to a decent job, is in fact a foundational construct on which would free up the progressive reform agenda once again. It's been stalled for four decades. Efforts to get it restarted have not succeeded. I think this is what could get it moving again. Okay. Now, why is it so hard to do that, to eradicate unemployment? I'm going to share a cartoon first because I think it helps to understand the problem. You should be looking at a cartoon of children playing musical chairs. Someone shout out if you're not, because it's not on mic center screen.
Yeah, it's not showing up, Phil. I don't see it.
It sometimes takes a second, but yeah, hold on.
I clicked the right screen for it to show up, but it didn't. Well, I'll just describe the cartoon. I'm looking at a white screen now, and the cartoon off to my left. The cartoon simply portrays a little girl crying, walking away from a group of children who are sitting on chairs, obviously the end of a round of the game. I should have learned from a year of teaching with Zoom that carrying a screen is a hit or miss proposition. Okay.
Sorry about that.
I used the musical chairs cartoon to illustrate what I think is the fundamental problem that makes it hard for people to understand the unemployment problem. That is, they tend to think of what is it that will help that child who is standing up crying because she doesn't have a seat to get one next time around? And there are all kinds of things that you could do to help that kid. But if you helped all of the kids in the same way, would it solve the problem of seatlessness? No. The only way to solve the problem of seatlessness is to add a chair to the circle, to make sure that there are enough chairs for everyone. Now, you still might have to address problems a particular kid has to make sure that they have an equal opportunity to get the good chairs, but at least access to a chair would be ensured, and without it, training, giving other legs up, whatever it may be, will not do the trick. And the same is true of the problem of unemployment. And this is a particularly understandable but vicious problem because unlike a game of musical chairs, we can't count the chairs. Nobody knows how many jobs are available. It's only been in the past two decades that the government has even tried to count the number of available jobs, and going back in time, that was totally unknown. Even counting the unemployed was something that became possible only in the late '30s and the 1940s. So what people saw was that, well, people that tried harder got jobs. People that had more training got jobs, and they kept them. And they took away from this the lesson, gee whiz, that's what you need to do to make sure that people can get jobs and keep them. But it doesn't work unless there are enough jobs to go around, and I believe there is ample research to show that that has never been the case. Hasn't been the case before industrialization. It certainly is not the case today. And that would have caused me to put another slide on the screen, which I'm not going to try, which is about the U.S. job gap. And what it shows is a line at the bottom showing job openings in the United States since December of 2000, which is when the federal government, the BLS, started providing data on job openings. And above that is another line which shows the official unemployment in excess of job openings. Above that line, another line that adds involuntary part-time workers to that total. And at the top, a line that adds job wanters not counted as unemployed to that total. And all three of those lines, either individually or together, always have exceeded the number of job openings in the economy. There is a job gap which clearly grows much, much larger during recessions, and we see that in the figure following the slight recession in the early 2000s and the serious recession following the financial crisis in 2008, 2009. But even when the economy is at what most economists refer to as full employment, there still is a job shortage. And the first requirement of any strategy for securing the right to a decent job has to be getting rid of that job shortage and doing it in a way that provides good jobs rather than crummy ones. Okay, I'm going to skip now to the last of...
Phil, just want to let you know you have a couple of minutes left. Phil, just want to let you know you have a couple of minutes left.
Okay, I will do this. The strategy for conquering the problem. There are a variety of job guarantee proposals out there. The common elements of all of them are that they are designed to provide work for everyone who wants a job. They are designed, though there are different mechanisms proposed for ensuring that. There is a joint united commitment to providing living wage work. And again, there are different ways that it's proposed that that be achieved. The proposals all provide for the jobs to be created in a way that addresses existing social problems and thereby assists society in achieving a wide range of social welfare goals. And they are all designed to work across all phases of the business cycle, expanding when there is a recession, shrinking at the top of the business cycle, but always there to close the job gap. And if it does that successfully, they're all designed also to lessen the severity of recessions because a job guarantee configured in this way would be a powerful automatic stabilizer. And that means that there would be less of a difference in the number of jobs needed at the top of the business cycle and during recessions. There would still be recessions, but they wouldn't be as deep and no one would have to go without a job during one. And so I
Sorry.
One minute?
Yep.
Oh, wow. More than I was counting on. And so I invite all of you to take a look at various proposals for a job guarantee and participate in discussions of them. It's my own feeling that we haven't spent enough time discussing various proposals, testing various proposals, seeing what survives close scrutiny and what doesn't. So I hope that you'll all feel encouraged to participate in those kinds of discussions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Harvey. I think that sets the stage well for some of the following comments from some of our local community activists. And the first of these is a good friend of mine who I've worked with on Mothers and Others for Justice. Holly Hackett is a dedicated community activist and public volunteer among many other roles. She serves as an incorporating member of Medicare for All Connecticut, which is a grassroots group of organizers, advocates, and allies working to advance the cause of health justice in the state of Connecticut and across the United States. Holly is also involved, as I noted, in a variety of other community health programs, including CARE, the Community Alliance for Research Engagement, based at Southern Connecticut State University. It is my great pleasure to welcome Holly Hackett.
Thank you, Professor Zach. Hello, everyone. I'm going to attempt to share my screen and I will be as brief as possible, but there's a lot of information I need to get through that I think is really important. You know, everybody has been really aware now of the racial and ethnic disparities in our society because of COVID. Good, you could see my screen. Thank you for letting me know. I just want to make sure everyone realizes it's a really huge in healthcare. And in my opinion, Medicare for All would at least take care of some of that as far as access and affordability. So just some slides for you to follow. I think it's easier for me to keep on track as well. So I'm part of Medicare for All Connecticut and PNHP Connecticut as well. We are online, www.medicareforallct.org. We can be found on Facebook and Twitter. And thank God, we have a communications department now who is amazing and I don't have to do that because I am techno-challenged. In September 2018, we handed over 17,000 petitions to Senator Chris Murphy, encouraging him to co-sponsor the Senate bill, but he did not. February 2019, we got ahold of US Rep. from Connecticut, the co-sponsor, which was Johanna Hayes, and she did. August 2020, we had a virtual town hall, which our keynote speaker was Senator Richard Blumenthal. And he, with no questions, specifically stated that he is a very strong supporter of Medicare for All. And just this past August, we, with all of our work on the ground, were able to get passed a Medicare for All resolution through the New Haven Board of Alder, which was a huge feat. Thank you to everyone who participated in that. A lot of our other legislative work we did, we are continuing to do and we will still try to push for state, federal, and local resolutions to make sure our legislators know the people want Medicare for All. Some stats are sad, 37,000 deaths to uninsured, which is unacceptable. We're losing people. In 2019, the disparities of insurance by race, race and ethnicity between the ages of 18 and 64, 29.7% of the people were Hispanic and 14.7% were black. And only 10.5% were white. Still, none of these people should be uninsured. That is just wrong. Healthcare is a human right. There shouldn't be anyone that is excluded for being taken care of.
Twenty-two minutes, just letting you know.
Okay, so I'm sure you guys all know, a lot of people have to, 20% of all bankruptcies in this country are because of medical debt. And 60% of those bankruptcies are with people who have private insurance. Even people who work at healthcare systems and lose their insurance, it's the same thing. They lose everything once they lose their insurance. You can see there's just disparities everywhere. I'm sorry, I didn't realize I had five minutes. My apologies. So you can see that all of the different lines of how the current system works, you get switched all over the place. And with a single payer system, it would go from the consumer to the government and then the government into the healthcare provider. So it's a much simpler way to go and it is the best way, in my opinion. So it is like Medicare, but better. No one is left out. It includes everyone, no copays, no deductibles, no nothing. At the point of service, everything is covered. So please support HR 1976 and try to convince our senator, Senator Winfield, to please support HR 1976 and become a co-sponsor as well. And I would absolutely love to speak to anyone any further who has any questions. Anytime, reach out. You can get my information anywhere. Thank you so much. It was a pleasure being here, everyone. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Holly.
Yes, thank you so much, Holly. I think the intersection between healthcare and employment issues is extremely important to highlight and appreciate you having done so. So now, our next speaker is Aziz Decon. Aziz Decon was born and raised in New York City. With a degree in biological sciences from Rutgers University, Aziz built an award-winning passive solar house and started one of the first organic farms in New Jersey. In management and development roles, Aziz has worked for social and environmental justice organizations, including the Coalition for the Homeless Strive, the Fortune Society, and Mother Jones. As a community organizer and director of the New York City Community Garden Coalition, he has led the fight for land tenure and food security. Aziz served on the Steering Committee for the People's Climate Movement rallies in New York City and Washington, D.C. It is my great pleasure then to welcome Aziz Decon to our program this evening.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I'm honored to be here and I wanted to thank the National Jobs for All for inviting me to speak. I'll be quick and to the point. We've talked a lot about what a just transition is. I want to go back to something that Trudy was talking about and it was, she mentioned about people in jobs. And I remember when Bill Clinton was president, he was giving a speech and touting that he had created eight million jobs. And there was somebody in the very front rows who yelled back at him, yes, I have three of them. And I think that's really a problem. We don't have enough full-time employment for people. And so what does a just transition mean? And the Connecticut Roundtable on Climate and Jobs strives consistently to find out, find that answer, because I'm not sure there's a real answer to this. I do know that in the work that we do, we need to know that labor needs to be leading on climate. And by that, I mean that if we're going to evolve into a green economy, if we're going to evolve, evolve to renewable energy, which we have to do, we need to have labor leading on this. We need to make sure that those jobs that appear to be disappearing are not disappearing, that in a green economy, in a renewable energy economy, jobs are available. And we've, in this past year, we've put together and passed a bill, and I always have to look at it because it's a long title, it's the Just Transition to Climate Protective Energy Production and Community Investment Act. And what this does is it basically levels the playing field. We found that nearly a year ago, a developer, a hedge fund developer, was putting together, building one of, attempting to build one of the larger solar complexes in Connecticut, in East Windsor. And what we realized was that they were going to try to do this without a prevailing wage agreement to this. And it doesn't work this way. You can't have developers come in, bid on projects using prevailing wage, and then turning around and bringing low out-of-state workers into these jobs. It's not a level playing field. So passing this bill creates this level playing field. It creates an opportunity for people to have apprenticeship programs. It allows community investment. It's a project labor agreement. It's local organizing to make sure that communities are vested into this, that they have a say in what happens in their communities. It's not enough. It's not enough to just say, we're creating jobs. It's important to realize that we need to have sustainable jobs, jobs where, when you come into an apprenticeship program, you have a sustainable, viable future. And how do we do that? We change the economy. We change the dynamic of this economy where we try and we make sure that all the green jobs are on a level playing field, where wages are commensurate to the work that we're doing, to make sure that people who are coming out of incarceration have those opportunities to come into these jobs, to make sure that women, people of color, people who normally don't have these jobs, people who don't have the ability or who have not had the ability to enter into the job force like this. We need to make sure and to ensure that people are getting jobs that are workable so that you don't have to work three jobs to make a living and that you don't have to have necessarily a car to get to the job. We need to make sure that transportation is available to people, to make sure that what we provide and how we provide families. I'm sorry, we just, I lost her name. We just heard about Medicare for All, medical insurance. Why is it that, why is it that we don't have a medical system where we, where we have to pay into it, where people can't get free medical care? Why is it that people get a different set of education depending on where they live? That's what a just transition, I think, means. And it was Holly. Thank you, Holly. You came back. It was Holly that said that about Medicare. And so, you know, people need to understand how we move forward. And how we move forward is by organizing. We organize, my experience in New York City taught me that you organize street by street, literally, to make sure that the people, people understand you. It's, you know, we can talk all we want about statistics and numbers. I'm not a statistics person. I'm not a numbers person. I leave that to people like Allison Pilcher, who's our policy director at the Roundtable, who understands these things. I'm an organizer at heart and I know that the only way forward, at least I think I know, the only way forward is to make sure that people are moving together, that we don't divide each other, and that the just transition is exactly that, to make sure, to ensure again, that the way we work together is the way we move forward, to make sure that we have carbon-free schools. How unfair and how unjust is it that kids are in diesel-powered buses to get to schools? No, this is not the way it should work and it doesn't have to work this way. We have the capacity, we have the ability to manufacture electric school buses and we know that that's the way forward. All of us in this group know that that's the way forward. So our job is to make sure that people like Holly, people like Trudy, people like all of you here, work together to move this thing forward. To define what a just transition is, is up to you individually, but it's up to us collectively to make sure that the process works for all of us, that a developer who's coming into East Windsor is held accountable to prevailing labor standards, that a developer, that the next developer that's coming in is going to be held to those standards as well. And you can pass all the bills you want. Thank you, Senator Winfield. You can pass all the bills you want, but the only way you can make those bills work is to make sure that there, that the laws within them are implemented. And so we have a lot of work to do, but collectively, we can make this happen. And collectively, we can make sure that the intersectionality of the work that we do is for everybody, that we leave nobody behind, that we make, we, 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 that we, we are progressives and that we can't allow, you know, we can't allow the federal government to dictate everything that we need to do. We need to dictate to the federal government. You know, in New York City, we always used to say, when we were talking about land tenure, we would say, whose land is it? It's our land. So I'm going to change that dynamic. Whose country is this? It's our country. And if it's our country, we have to move forward. We have to move this thing forward. We have to make sure that every elected knows that we are powerful, we vote, and we have a voice and make sure that that voice isn't just us individually, but collectively.
One minute, Aziz.
I'm done. My one minute, I'll say my one minute to the collective. Thank you again. I really appreciate being able to be here. And, you know, let's, let's move this ball forward. It's not that hard to do, but it takes a lot of work. Thanks, everyone.
Well, thank you. Thank you so much, Aziz. Thank you. This is exactly the kind of thing we need to be doing, I think, organizing to get this done. And, and we need to involve, I think, all manner of constituencies in this process, including young people. And so I am, I am really pleased that we have a young person who is going to speak to us today, Jonathan Gonzalez Cruz, who is an undocumented immigrant from Mexico. He's a graduate of UConn's MS in Quantitative Economics and works as a healthcare organizer in the Connecticut Citizen Action Group and is on the Husky for Immigrants Coalition. So please join me then in welcoming Jonathan Gonzalez Cruz.
Thank you, Stephen. And thank you so much all for being here and for giving us this space to talk about these issues. And I simply wanted to refer back to the beginning when Sariana mentioned how we are living on land that, to be honest, like, is not ours. We should, like, our homes are here, but these were homes from people who, you know, were stolen. And so with that, with that in mind, I, you know, I'm going to set the tone by like, no human being is illegal on stolen land. And I want to make the case as to why we have to incorporate undocumented immigrants into, you know, this, this job guarantee. And I'm going to talk, and immigration has, has any issue, different intersectionalities. And because I have to be concise, I'll only touch on three, economic, racial, and then also for healthcare. So from an economic standpoint, undocumented immigrants, you know, we are taxpayers, there's 11 million of us here, and yet despite us working and providing to, you know, like the economy, we are often left out of, quite honestly, everything. everything federal. You know, you heard a lot of politicians saying, you know, healthcare's important, yet when they were passing stimulus bills to give people money, when they were passing healthcare coverage, undocumented immigrants were left out, which is completely unfair because our money is used to fund Social Security, to fund Medicare, to fund Medicaid. And I had to watch my mom not get health coverage, who has lung issues, and see, and know that, like, we are paying taxes, and yet we are paying for other self-coverage. And all we want is the same opportunity to get that healthcare coverage. And touching, in touching into the racial intersectionality of it, Black, Black immigrants, unfortunately, because this country was built on race and still has racist institutions, you know, they still experience even more severe because of it. And as we saw in the Texas border, where there was a gross overt racism in a white male on a horseback whipping Black Asians, simply trying to, you know, live a better life in Texas, which is not even, which wasn't even originally United States land. That was land that was stolen from Mexico. So for white males to try to push back Black immigrants from coming in here is just completely obscene. And lastly, because of the healthcare, undocumented immigrants, we are barred from any federal program. We can't access Medicare, Medicaid. And that's why we have the Husky for Immigrants Coalition that rose as part of two. She'll be talking a little bit later. You know, like, I'm sure none of you knew that in Connecticut, the most uninsured group is undocumented immigrants with a 52% uninsured rate. And yet, where was the conversation when we were talking about helping people in Connecticut? In fact, we, we, this is a conversation we've had moving back three years ago, and yet this year was the first time that a bill was passed. And even though something was passed, it was only meant for, Husky got extended for children eight and under. And yet, you ask yourself, why was it not extended for nine-year-olds? Do nine-year-olds not need healthcare coverage? Why is it that even in a Democratic state, where we have a Democratic legislator, a Democratic governor, why is it that they were still able to say, we're not going to help nine-year-olds? We're not going to help 10-year-olds? And it's simply put, because they were undocumented. Every single-
Sorry. One minute. You got one minute. Sorry.
And so the reason I bring up all this is because, you know, like, when you're undocumented in this country, you are unfortunately considered second class. The government is not as willing to help you. People who are within these spaces still hold the stigma of saying, we have to help undocumented immigrants. That's what we experienced with Democrats, that's what we experienced with other groups working on the same issue. And so what I want to say is, you know, we have to help. In talking about helping people and guaranteeing them jobs, we have to make sure that, because this is being done at the federal level, that we are inclusive of undocumented immigrants, because we have created these systems where they, we are suffering because we are left out of all the help we need. And, you know, within the different intersectionalities, like, as I mentioned before, if you're a Black immigrant, you have, it works because then you're also dealing with the racism in this country. And so I simply wanted just to try to tie together all those intersectionalities in a very concise way. And hopefully, I made the case that, you know, in moving forward, when we are talking about this, we say undocumented immigrants should also be part of this bill too. And thank you so much for, for listening.
Thank you, Jonathan. Thank you for, for raising those important intersectional issues that we absolutely need to keep in the forefront as we fight for a right to employment for everyone. And at this point, I am very pleased to introduce our, our next speaker. Sariana Sabares is a graduate student at Southern Connecticut State University in the Social Work in Women and Gender Studies Department. She's one of the first students to pursue an MSW concentration focused on community organizing and policy analysis. She holds bachelor's degrees in philosophy and psychology from Boston University and is a member of the National Jobs for All Network, a founding member of the Social Welfare Action Alliance Connecticut Chapter, the vice president of Southern Connecticut State University's Graduate Social Work Association, and the lead organizer of SCSU Social Justice Action Organization, the Rapid Response Team. Also, as you know, the chief co-organizer of this program. And so it is my great pleasure to introduce Sariana Sabares.
Wow. Thank you. Thank you. It's an honor to be talking with, with you, all of you, really. I, as a student organizer, I'm humbled. So hello, I'm Sariana Sabares, and we met briefly earlier in the program. Zach did a really good job of introducing me, so I don't need to repeat those things. I've been an organizer and a participant in several movements and causes over the course of my relatively short life, mostly in the food justice movement, and more recently as a founding member of the Social Welfare Action Alliance with Dr. Tom Zach, trying to reestablish a radical social work community in the state of Connecticut, and with National Jobs for All, fighting for a federal job guarantee. Organizing this event has been an eye-opener for me, and I hope some of you, some of you listening who are involved in or interested in activism can relate to this. One of the unfortunate things that happens when we organize around a single issue is that we can develop a kind of myopia, nearsightedness, right? We have to. We have to be really laser-focused on our goals if we want to get anything accomplished in a neoliberal society. Swimming against the current is hard and it's tiring. We have to decide what we can spare and where we're going to put it. When I first heard about full employment and a federal job guarantee, I admit that I didn't quite understand what it had to do with me. It seemed like something related to economics or labor issues or other complicated things that I didn't have a whole lot of experience with. But as I started learning about it, I realized very quickly just how simple it is. Supporting a federal job guarantee is believing that every single person, regardless of their life circumstances, deserves a decent job if they want one. And that is a right that deserves to be protected. That's it. That's the whole thing. Now, where it gets interesting, and not complicated, but interesting, is where this crosses the paths of other issues and movements. For example, healthcare, like Holly told us about. Think about how much less stressful life would be if we knew we were covered. Education. How many of us begin our adulthood by incurring crippling student loan debt? What are the human costs of continuing to view these things as privileges rather than rights? How about all the stay-at-home parents, predominantly women, who live with the expectation that they'll never be compensated for serving as the backbone of our country? Or the young people who feel pressured to enlist in our military and hope there isn't a war simply because they want a chance to be able to go to college? These things are normal in our society. They're normal in our society. Let that sink in. The greater project here is convincing people that this does not have to be the case. We aren't obligated to accept as normal states of being that make it impossible for us to thrive. Not so long ago, it was normal for parents living in poverty to send their sons and daughters off to work every day. Norms change. And a federal job guarantee, as pie in the skies it might sound or seem to those of us who have only ever really seen conservative times, would make in one fell swoop all of these other things possible, because they are possible. It's shifting the range of acceptable debate. That's the first hurdle. So thank you all for coming out today to think past what we assume and expect to be possible, and to see over the silos and organizational borders to the place where we can all see the things that we're all fighting together for, a just and equitable future for all. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Sariana, for raising those issues about the intersections between the various things that we're working on here and, and the movement we're trying to build here in Connecticut.